Well, I have to call her tomorrow because I gotta tell her. It's shorter time. I wish I brought my gift. I think I have color for me because I don't. I don't have the oxygen paper and I don't have color. I don't.
Because then we consider somebody else down here. All he has is a basketball now. Feels.
Yeah, I think she's going to play.
Hello. I don't want to cut anybody out of the basketball. That's what we're waiting for.
I mean, I really wanted him so, and that's kind of a message. She linked us from north. But anyway, as soon as I hear something, I'll let you.
Thank you. Because we have a special. And you can't do it with pressure on there.
That's right. And so I said, give them every opportunity.
Yeah.
Did you crawl?
I wonder if they're gonna have kids in this school. I wonder if they're gonna have kids in this school.
Oh, children.
Never. I'll send it out. Maybe they'll go. Do you have time? Go watch the baseball. Should we watch the baseball? Well, I want to see you in a while. We take you to a scene. No, they hit them first.
This is a special. That's one and a half. This is two. Well, you won't be back. Shaw, Van, and Hugh back.
I know. That's exactly what I said.
You need some help if you want me to send my number to you just in case.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get it done. And then go with other thing or home.
Oh, yeah, we all were.
So that whole thing will hold us up. Versus the real thing. Oh, no, duplous, duplous.
Just in case you forget.
That's good. So glad to see you. Okay. Good evening. Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to meeting. The meeting of November to order at this time. And we are delighted to see everyone here. And I'm not sure if airing our meeting by television is the right thing. Because we miss bodies, don't we? We don't have the other people here. So we're actually welcoming the staff as our live audience this evening. But it's really good to see all of you. We miss you when we don't see you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to come out of our closed session. Yes. Well, and then we'll do the certifications. Which is first, the certification to come out or the motion? Let's do the, yes, a motion to come out of our closed session. As we probably moved in second, that we come out of closed session. At this time, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So, at this time, we do need certification, Mr. Counsel.
Franklin City School Board has convened a closing meeting on this date pursuant to a non-recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where as section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted and conformed to with Virginia law. Now therefore, be resolved that Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. I think that was Mrs. Austin who gave the second. We've heard the motion to certify that the Franklin City School Board has convened in a closed meeting on this date of November thirteen, nine, two thousand fourteen, pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And where as section two point two dash three seven one two point D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted and conformative with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that Franklin City School Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge that we only discuss business relative to items number one, number two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Motions from the closed session at this time. And I think that we have several. Yes.
Is it possible that we could do the pledge allegiance before we conduct any business?
We could, but that's not the order of our agenda for this evening. If you recommend that for the next meeting, Mr. Counsel, we shall consider doing that. And it's not that we have disregard for our country. We do love these United States of America. But it's just that the next item on our agenda this evening is two point five. And I think that it was placed there because, I know that it was, because in talking with Mr. Bell and with Mrs. Kendrick, many times we get lost in our motions from closed sessions. Since we've certified those things on which we acted, then it just seems that to act on those items from closed session might be most appropriate at this time. But if you'd like to reorder the agenda for our next meeting, we will definitely consider it and we thank you. All right, motions from the closed session.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
As we probably moved in second, that we approve the personnel agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is unanimously carried. The next item for motions are the non-resident student, students.
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations for eleven thirteen oh one and oh two.
It's properly moved in second that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for non-resident students eleven thirteen oh one and eleven thirteen oh two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. We had another motion for attendance reporting format for the central office staff. Is there a motion to this effect?
I'll make a motion that the board continue to discuss the central office staff reporting format before we vote.
Would you be willing to just say let's table that until we have further discussion?
Yes. So I'll make a motion that we table that until we have further discussion.
It's properly moved in second that we table action on the attendance format reporting for central office staff. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Was there another motion at this time from the closed session? All right. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance. And I think that Mr. Phelps is in charge at this time. And I want to thank Mr. Bell, central office staff, and whomever did it for the master schedule for the pledge of allegiance by school. I think that that's going to help us an awful lot. Because sometimes I get here and I forget which school is going to do so. Now we have that master list. And I'm hoping that principals will place it at the forefront of your attention so that school board meeting, you'd know who goes when. Mr. Phelps.
Okay. My young lady that was supposed to do the pledge tonight is under the weather. So I got my pinch hitter over here. Mr. Shamar Ballard.
Good.
He's gonna lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I believe, Madam Chairman, what we're gonna change despite move trucey one point three to trucey four to three point four for the superintendent's report. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to remove item one point three, trucey report, to item three point four under the superintendent's report.
As we probably moved in second, that we reordered the agenda by moving item one point three, the trucey report, to item three point four under the superintendent's report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Good news. Do we have any?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bell?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize our board members from the Virginia School Boards Association, who encouraged the participation in Virginia School Board Academies. The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors would like to recognize each individual board member for furthering their education in boardsmanship, the skills that are aligned with boardsmanship, and curriculum issues through attendance at academy programs. Tonight, we have certificates for all of our board members. And the certificates read, Virginia School Boards Association, Award of Excellence. This award is presented to each individual board member's name has been placed in the slot for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the V S B A School Board Academy, two thousand twelve through two thousand fourteen. We have a pin that's attached with each certificate as well as a token of our appreciation donated through Harrison Education Consultants that is at your place, which is representative of our team, F C P S emblem. There is a football. And you have various goodies inside. At this time, I would like to bring our board members to the front and hand out each certificate. Will someone take a picture, please? And not only from V S B A, but from F C P S, Franklin City Public Schools. We thank you for your continued support and all the work that you do to ensure that our students have all they need and our staff has that as well. We thank you so much. Ms. Austin? Mr. Counsel? Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, we'll take a group chat. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bell. We're most appreciative of opportunities to train. We go to development activities for contingent professionalism as we serve on Franklin City School Board, just as you do in schools and in the school system. Our last trip was one to Charlottesville. And we left early morning. What was it, six thirty? Six thirty in the morning? And the great pleasure was to ride on a shiny blue van. It was very nice. I guess that you may have had that opportunity too. But that was a nice experience and we enjoyed the day. Mr. Bell was the chauffeur. So we do train, train, train. And I do thank my fellow board members for always being there to experience the wonderful things to which we are exposed. Thank you so very much.
Madam Chair, that's all the good news for this evening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Oh. How could I forget? The principals are waiting for that.
Ms. King, Mr. Counsel, board members, and Mr. Bell, and Franklin City Public Schools staff and community. It's now time to recognize the best teacher attendance and best student attendance for the month of October. So the principals will come forward.
I'll begin with the best teacher attendance for the month of October. It was extremely close this month. Frank Hostel, ninety-four percent. Best student attendance? J.K. King, ninety-eight point six percent.
Good job.
Yes, very nice. Very nice. Citizens Town, do we have anyone signed up to speak? I know, it could be staff though. Some staff member might want to speak. Right? Report of the superintendent.
Okay. First, Madam Chair, board members, you have the principal's report. Are there any questions on the principal's report that had been presented to you in your packet at this time?
I only had one. And that was F H S. Your reporting on attendance, your monthly report. On enrollment. I had, when I looked at yours, four one five for enrollment, I think, and three one four for re-entries. Has that been corrected, Mr. Phelps? On your report for October? Do you see your first line for enrollment and then your re-entries, withdrawals?
I don't, I know that our enrollment is two hundred and eighty-six.
Yes, I have that. But it didn't, it wasn't like carried from your, all E ones and E twos and R threes. It's, it's something wrong with, and I got your total. Yes, because, I mean, that transition is going to be so important, you know, to, as you reach the end of the year. I don't know what could have happened with that.
I don't know how.
There, I don't know either.
I don't know what you're referring to, so I can check on it.
Do you see it, Mr., on your, what is that? What is your, what is enrollment in the first line up at the top? I had four one five. Do you have that at all? I don't have it. Right. See, for, that's right. For all of, all original entries, Mr. Phelps, you have four one five as your total. And, see, I don't know, you might want to check. Yes.
I know my total enrollment right now is two eighty-six.
Right, right. And, and that, and the whole sheet has to balance.
That's right.
Right, so you, right, you might want to check that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, board members, we, we will check on that and just email that to you so you'll see that.
And, and, and as long as he has it corrected for the next meeting, Mr. Bell, that's fine. But I didn't want us to get to the end of the year and then we can't balance that enrollment and membership, re-entries and everything. Thank you so much, Mr. Phelps and Mr. Bell.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Any other questions from the board? Also for the board, you have the professional development log that was in your packet. Any questions on the professional development log from September the tenth, which we've seen that before, up to October the twenty-ninth? Lot of activities have been going on.
It has. And I, I mean, I just applaud total staff for all of the professional development experiences in which people are participating. It has to be a winning thing. It has to be a win-win situation. And we thank you.
I just had a question in reference to the Medicaid and schools training opportunity. I believe Mrs. Beaman and Mrs. Madry attended. Where was this conference held?
Ms. Beaman, you want to speak to that, please?
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Yates will come forward with the monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have before you in your packet your October revenue and expenditures for the general fund. You have your September reports, revenues and expenditures for the cafeteria fund, and your revenues and expenditures for the federal funds for the month of October. And I'll entertain any questions. and I'll entertain any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Mrs. Yates?
I certainly do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, you have in your packet the alignment of the corrective action plan as we looked at, we've separated into the four goals and called this the memorandum of understanding. The report has been generated from each department, from directors, coordinators, and supervisors. At this time, do you have any questions under curriculum alignment?
Does anyone have questions?
Human Resources Management? And Leadership?
Under which line did the dual enrollment offerings through South Side Community College come, Mr. Bell?
I think that's under Purpose and Direction, if I'm not mistaken, that's Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Want to speak of that, Mr. Edwards, that partnership?
And I'm thrilled to see that, but my question would be, how will the courses be taught? Are they online? Will teachers come to our classrooms or just what?
Yes, 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 Madam Chair, and we are having a meeting to work those, dirty details out, and that meeting will be actually Wednesday, and so we'll be speaking exactly how there will be, some could be virtual and some could be some of the teachers coming to the campus as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
And I, and I'm delighted to see that because I do know that many school divisions are going with several institutions in order to be sure to re-enhance our course offerings in our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, because some offer more than others.
That's it.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I forgot. When you make that decision or you work it out, could you share that plan with us in writing so that we will see the course offerings by names and descriptions, everything that you maybe decide? Because I guess that we would have to approve that anyway, would we not, being it's?
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Phelps, and then we'll be working on it together, yes, ma'am.
Wonderful.
Under, I believe it's Purpose and Direction?
Mm-hmm.
Want to thank Mrs. Beaman and Mr. Phelps and their staff for accommodating those three students from the gifted program that were administered the PSAT at Franklin High School. Thank you.
Any other questions or acknowledgements under Purpose and Direction? And Leadership and Governance? And then we have additional actions beyond the scope of the MOU, if you have any questions under that.
Did the group ever get down at the taking? Now, when's it due to be finished?
It was, it's due to be finished at the end of this week, barring we don't get any rain, and we had some rain this week, but it was due to be finished on the fourteenth, which is tomorrow. So I know they were out there today because, you know, the rain was coming, but I think they went on and worked anyway, so hopefully they will finish that up this weekend so we can give you a report on that in the next meeting. But today was, tomorrow is the, is the actual date, the fourteenth.
We're not expecting it to be finished tomorrow.
I, I really don't think so on that, but now, they had, only things they have left, the only thing they have left to do is just to put the metal around the side, because basically up top, everything is done, so those flashings, that's the only thing that's left. And there was a, one, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wright, a camera that needs to be put back up, two cameras, two cameras that need to be put back up. Any other word from the engineers, Mr. Wright?
I've spoken with Robert Williams, who's been the, I guess, the foreman of this operation. I spoke with him yesterday. The flashing, the metal gutters and all of the drainage is being prefabricated to be shipped and installed to us within the next week is what I have been promised and told me. He has also been in touch with Mr. Custer as well. The roofing is all complete, the roofing, the rubber outer layer that we have on the outer shell is going to have one more stretch when they put those on, put the gutters on. It's going to be one more pull and stretch. That will be adhered to the building and all of that metal flashing and the gutter works is all supposed to be installed, and I was told by Mr. Williams that it has to be completed by next, by, by this coming weekend. It is supposed to have some people working over the weekend and that the roofing piece will be completed and then the metal, once it is shipped to us, which I was told should be the week of Thanksgiving, they will hopefully have that completed as well. And I mentioned to them, I, you know, said something else, and I don't know what your date is and what your penalty is out, y'all deal with that by now. Are we dry? Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, we're good and dry.
No leaks. If we had another situation where we had to come back into the library, it came up those walls, but Dan and his group of guys, they'd gone in and more or less secured it with a tarp, that would be the only concern, I'd have the roof itself and all of the others since they're completed, there's been no leaks at all.
So I suppose my question would be to Mrs. Yates, are we on time according to the agreement that we signed for requisitions and utilizing the funds through, from VPSA?
The remaining funds that we have except for the last twenty thousand dollars for the J.K. King group is left for the Franklin High School roof project.
So then we have met the deadline as specified, we will have met it?
The deadline to spend all of the funds was actually November ninth, but in speaking with the city, as long as the project is underway, which we are underway, we are fine not to have met that deadline with one hundred percent of the funds.
Right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate all of you coming to sit at the front, that's really nice of you. And I don't want to ask you to come to the podium to speak because you've already met the request, but for the public viewing at home, they on camera when they talk. Mr., um...
If they come to the podium.
Yeah.
If they come to the podium, yes.
So we might have to ask you to come to the podium so that the public can see you speak, and so whenever a question is directed to you, will you please come forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much.
Mr. Bell, under Leadership and Governance and Special Education Specialists attended the Management Advisory Committee meeting on October fifteenth. Is it possible to get the minutes or is someone here tonight able to share?
Yes, Ms. Beaman?
We can certainly get the minutes from that Miss Vaughn.
You have to come up here, Ms. Beaman, yes. Thank you.
Yes, we can certainly provide you minutes from that particular event. Ms. Vaughn attended that, that's the program that we have several students in, in the half-day program in Norfolk, so we can certainly get that to you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bell?
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, you have the truancy report that was moved from closed session to open session. Do you have any questions of the truancy report at this time?
Are there questions in regards to the truancy report? Any comments?
My only comment is that, you know, we sent out twenty-one letters, maybe we should have twenty-one meetings? I, I don't, I don't know how all that works, you know, really, but, I don't know, it just seems like a necessary one now. Already.
You want to speak to that, Mr. Phelps? What she's, what Mrs. Gobin is referring to is that on the truancy report, there were twenty-one six-day letters sent, six days have passed, twenty-one letters were sent, and right now we've held eight attendance meetings.
That's right. What happens is on the sixth day, a letter is automatically generated, and then Mr. Lowe follows up, and in his follow-up, he determined that eight meetings were necessary because the parent was aware, maybe we had a parent note or a doctor's note, but eight of them were unresolved, so therefore he had a parent, he had a meeting, the others he was able to resolve without a meeting.
And I guess in other words, what we're saying is that you are following the policy for discipline.
Yes, we, we send, automatically we send home the, the three-day letters, you probably have that number also, I can't remember what it is.
Yes, sir, twenty.
Twenty, and then the six-day letters are automatically generated. Ms. Edwards mails those home every Friday, and then Mr. Lowe gets a copy also, and then he follows up after it's been six days, either by meeting, well, first by phone or, or by actual meeting where they come to the high school and we have a meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the truancy report? Before I end my report, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would like to bring your attention to, there was a, we had a representative from VDOE that was, that has been in our division for two years, passed away on yesterday, Dr. Jen Landham, and also we have one of our staff members, her father passed away, Ms. Patricia Rabel. So at this time, can we acknowledge a moment of silence? Our condolences goes out to those families. We are always sorry to hear of the loss of good people, and they would truly be missed, they would truly be missed. At this time, Madam Chair, board members, you can, we have concluded our superintendent's report.
Thank you so very much, and it does reflect all of the hard work, Mr. Bell, we really appreciate that. We think that we're moving in the right direction, and I just love the fact that we report out things that are going on in the school division relative to the corrective action plan by the essential actions as noted. I think that that is very appropriate, thank you for using that format. So at this time, next thing on our agenda is, is that of the action to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October sixteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and second that we approve the minutes of the October sixteen, two thousand fourteen meeting. Is there any discussion?
My, my name isn't on there as a present member, but I made motions and stuff, so it's a fact that it's been on there as a present.
All right. Is there any other correction? Hearing none, is it all right if we then say that we are approving the minutes of October sixteen, two thousand fourteen with the corrections?
Yes.
Right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there another motion regarding the minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the master call school board meeting on October twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen.
The property moved in second that we approve the call school board meeting minutes for October the twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion?
I think it's, perhaps was at that meeting too, you know, it says you were absent. She's, maybe she came in late.
Probably came in late, mm-hmm. So there's a correction there, who made the motion?
I did, I made a motion to, to accept with corrections made.
All right. It's properly moved in second that we accept the minutes for October twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen with the corrections as made. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion is carried. And I don't think, how do we note late arrival, Mrs. Kendrick?
Um, and underneath, or underneath the section at the top of the minutes, where the list of all the minutes present, there's one added to say whether or not someone will have left to the meeting for, but they are absent or just not included.
In that list.
There's a portion of the minutes.
Right, so then maybe, could we do it in italics or something so that that is not missed? It might help you in going back and looking to, maybe if you do it in a different type of font, that might help. Okay, thank you. Four point two, action to approve bills for payment, and Mrs. Yates, that's you again.
You have before you the September payments that we're asking that you approve for payment.
I make a motion that we, uh, pay bill.
Second, it's been properly moved in second that we pay, that we approve the bills for payment.
I have a question about the water cleanup that J.K. King, was that our fault or was that because of the roof people at other job fault?
That actually was a storm fault, and we have been reimbursed through insurance for the damages done minus our deductible. So we had to pay upfront, but we have since received the check from the insurance.
Is there any other question, any other statement? I, I, I do appreciate our using local vendors as much as possible, and I saw them throughout this listing of bills that need to be paid, and I encourage you to do that as much as possible, I'm sure you do, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion is carried, bills are paid. All right, Virginia Department of Education Office of School Nutrition Programs.
Madam Chair, board members, you have before you the approval letter of our participation in the Community Eligibility Provision Program called SEP. This is the program where our school, where our schools receive free breakfast as well as free lunch. Any questions at this time? The letter that was provided from VDOE for your review through Mrs. Grams is before you.
My question, I had several, help me with the transition here, please. We fed all students last year, did we not, breakfast and lunch? Did we ever do that in this system?
We gave them breakfast for free.
We gave them breakfast free.
Yes, ma'am.
So we fed all students free for breakfast last year.
Correct.
All right. My next question I suppose would be, we're on, we are doing this as the first school division in the state?
No, ma'am.
No, there are other school divisions participating in this program.
There are other school divisions that do that.
I think there's seven.
We got, in the, in the app, in the letter or something, there was a special recognition stated relative to us being what?
We're one of the first.
We're one of the first, they congratulated us for being one of the first.
Correct.
Okay.
Says congratulations on being one of the first school divisions in Virginia.
One of the first, not the first, okay, one of the first.
Well, we're all in, at the same time, I mean, this is not a, everyone applied for it, and it's started retroactively on July first from last year, for this year, excuse me, this, this, this school year.
So is this, is this the first year that we've had this opportunity or that?
Yes.
It's the first?
First year of the program.
Oh, wonderful, all right.
And I believe there's seven school divisions in the state of Virginia that are participating.
So seven schools across, school divisions across the state, and we are one of those?
Correct.
And in looking at, I suppose, the number of students who qualified for free breakfast, then this would be, and I guess free lunch as well, this would be a good thing to do. this would be a good thing to do and possibly reduce, the way that you're going to account for this reduces that stigma. And that's one of the, uh, uh, tenets of the program, that that should happen. Thank you. Anyone else with a question or comment? Or remark?
Thank you, Mr. Wagon.
Thank you so very much. So do we need a motion to participate?
No, ma'am.
We do have?
That was just a letter just acknowledging our participation.
Wonderful.
No, ma'am.
Right, the next item on the agenda, first reading, VSBA policy updates. We do have quite a number, Mrs. Wade, don't we?
Yes, ma'am, good evening again. You have before you the VSBA policy updates from October two thousand fourteen. This is for first reading tonight. You'll see the first page reflects the reasons for the revision. A lot of them are a result of amendments to Virginia Code, or either reflects a change in the cross-reference or legal references.
Are there any questions from any of the board members?
Okay.
I have one, and I think that I want to hear Mr. Williams's view on this. Mr. Williams, and probably I should have called, but I know that this is the first reading. When we attend the Virginia School Board Association Convention, there are wonderful opportunities provided to us by businesses for us to attend dinners. They was, give us dinners or meals or whatever. And one of those, and this is not a change because it has been in the policy all of the time. And last year, we were invited to, you know, a dinner by one of the businesses, and I encouraged us not to attend because it was like an extension of hospitality or something. Where, where do we draw that line? Is there a line to be drawn?
Well, excuse me, in the setting that you're mentioning, Mrs. King, I would suggest that if, if meals are being offered to any division that wanted to participate and you were basically doing a banquet style, something of that nature where everybody's participating, then I don't think you're getting any advantage that anybody else isn't getting, and certainly you, you can participate without a fear that you're receiving something that would be construed as a gift beyond, something that would cause a conflict of interest. By the same token, if they came to Franklin and maybe wanted to take all members of the council out, once again, I don't see a problem with that. If they came to Franklin and wanted to take one particular person out, or try to pick you off one at a time, something of that nature, then I think the problem does occur. So it really depends upon the setting. There is no black and white line, I'm afraid.
So it's just, because it's a dinner for the school, school board members for Franklin City.
Yes, ma'am.
That, not a banquet to which we have been invited, but just a dinner.
And, and I think if it's the entire school board, I think you're okay.
Okay.
If they come to Franklin and say, "Mrs. King, we'd like to take you out to dinner," then I think your antenna need to go up and say, "Well, I might not want to participate in that."
Thank you. And I noticed that that was in this policy that we're reviewing, and I want to clear that up because of the meeting, our conference coming up, so that we can have dinner as a school board if it is that we're invited by a business. Thank you.
And we have been invited.
Yes.
But I noticed that it went out to, I think, all Region Two superintendents and boards to attend, the one that I received.
All right.
Yeah, so it just didn't go out to Franklin City Public Schools.
Right.
It went out to the whole conglomerate.
And the one, I want to say too, the one that they invited us on last year, it wasn't just to the Franklin City Public School. It was to all the schools.
Yeah, and then you choose if you want to come.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so much in the news about that nowadays, and I want to be sure, I just, yes. Thank you so very much.
Good question.
And that's in the policy that we are to consider for adoption next month. Local gifted plan.
Ms. Bean? Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Good evening. You have before you the local gifted plan. This is primarily a, a plan that was worked on the thirteen-fourteenth school year, and we certainly have done a little bit of work on it now, and it is a continuous process, but you have that before you if you have any questions at this time.
Any questions? And we will read the proposed policy, and for next month, we might have some questions. Thank you, Mrs. Smith, thank you. Five point four, first reading, the staff development plan.
Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Council, Board Members, my superintendent, my colleagues and the community. You have before you the professional development plan for the division. And I would just like to say that it is a first reading, and that I am collaborating with the chief academic officer to make sure that everything is aligned and in order. And so you may see some adjustments or changes to the document as we proceed to work together to finalize it. Also, if you look at the professional development plan, you'll see the essential action, and it talks about unpacking the standard and aligning the written, taught, and tested curriculum for all students, and those are the PDs that are referenced in this division plan that should impact all teachers. So we do have additional professional development going on in the division, so don't think this is the end-all-be-all. But these are the professional development activities that are specifically designed to address the requirement.
Questions or comments? There is quite a bit going on, and, and now we have all of this integrated into a plan, and I know that professional development is going to continue.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question, and it's not to cause any additional work on the part of any staff member, but to maybe lead us to greater accountability when it comes to observation of instruction and lesson plan design, lesson plan writing. Do we require you, when you observe, teachers, documentation of the number of times that they utilize technology in instruction?
We have, um, let's see, our document and the standards within the document and the indicators under each standard, there are components that address technology and integration in the classroom. So when we go in and observe, and when the principals go in and observe, and they put their comments, and they can check off those areas, we just recently, it was, I think it was yesterday, we can pull up a report in PD three sixty that will show us the percentage of times that they've seen technology integration in the classroom. So if that percentage is low, then we know that's possibly something that we need to target in the division for professional development or additional support at the buildings. So we do have a process in place where we can see that and monitor it and try to support it. Please, continue.
Is it on the lesson plan?
Um, technology, yes. There is a place on the lesson plan where they should be trying to integrate technology into the instruction. So yes, ma'am, it's also checked there by the principals when they turn in lesson plans. But it can be monitored through actual observations and documentation.
So do we specify a minimum of number of times that we would expect to see teachers use technology in instruction over a given period of time?
There is not a set number. Um, one of the things that we try to look at is not necessarily just using technology, because some people would think we use the Promethean board, so that's technology. But you want to use, it's how you use the technology that's important. Um, you want the students to be actively engaged in the utilization of the technology, not just always the teacher. So you could go in the room and mark, "Technology is being used," but is it actively engaging the students, and do they have an opportunity to use technology themselves in the instructional process? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, Mr. Bell.
Good answer, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
The latest research does show that forty percent, that students are successful if you see at least forty percent of technology integration into the curriculum.
Yes.
That's right.
That's the latest research.
And see teachers utilizing it. So, and I, I, I'm just throwing that question out so that when you have, when you have opportunity to discuss your lesson plan and teacher observation, the instruction across the division, do we need to specify by teacher a minimum number of times that you expect to see them utilize technology and instruction? I'm just throwing that out there, because I think there has to be some documentation somewhere because of the significance of doing that, especially, you know, for students. And, and I'm just saying, I, I'm not making that decision, but will you talk about that, will you?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
All right. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the QZAP resolution and the updated language. And I ask, um, Dr. Hall Leonard, if she would read the resolution, and after reading it, we would then offer any opportunity for school board members or even our student liaison. This relates to utilization of technology, technology. So if anyone wishes to make a comment, you have a privilege to do so. So, Dr. Hall Leonard?
Resolution requesting the city council of the city of Franklin, Virginia, to issue general obligation school bonds to finance capital projects for school purposes and consenting to the issuance thereof, be it resolved. The school board of the city of Franklin, Virginia, the school board hereby request that the city council of the city of Franklin, Virginia, the city, cause the city to issue its general obligation school bonds, the bonds, in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of one million eight hundred sixteen thousand, but with the objective of providing up to one million eight hundred sixteen thousand in net proceeds to finance school capital improvement projects for S.P. Morton Elementary School, J.P. King Middle School, and Franklin High School, including without limitation, energy upgrades, including new HVAC systems, repairs and or replacements of roofs, exhaust fans, refrigeration systems, and hot water heaters, security enhancement and lighting, as well as the purchase of equipment, including technology equipment for the schools and capital expenditures related to all of the foregoing, all of which constitute capital projects for public school purposes, and consent to the issuance of the bonds pursuant to Article Seven, Section Ten of the Constitution of Virginia. Two, further the school board consents to the purchase of the bonds by the Virginia Public School Authority as part of VPSA's fall two thousand fourteen issuance of qualified zone academy bonds, and approves the submission of the application on behalf of the city and the school board to the Virginia Department of Education as part of the competitive evaluation process for qualified zone academy bond volume cap allocation. Three, the chairman of the school board, the superintendent of the schools of the city of Franklin School Division, the schools, and such other officer or officers of the school board or the schools as either may designate or hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver on behalf of the school board a use of proceeds certificate and tax compliance agreement. The tax compliance agreement setting forth the expected use and investment of the proceeds of the bonds, and containing such covenants as may be necessary for VPSA's qualified zone academy bonds to qualify as and to remain as qualified tax credit bonds, qualified zone academy bonds, and specified tax credit bonds under Sections fifty-four A, fifty-four E, and six-four-three-one of the Internal Revenue Code of one-nine-eight-six as amended the tax code and the applicable regulations. The school board covenants on behalf of itself and the schools under its governance, that the school board and the schools shall comply with the provisions of the tax compliance agreement and the tax code so that VPSA's qualified zone academy bonds will not lose their status as qualified tax credit bonds, qualified zone academy bonds, and specified tax credit bonds under Section five-four A, five-four E, six-four-three-one of the tax code. Four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you so very much. Right? Are there any questions, discussions, observations by board members? Or, Mr. Counsel?
I'd like to ask one question about the resolution per se. At the last meeting, we talked about it, we had to have a private company of individuals donate ten percent of the, which was a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And we said it was going to be ABNB.
ABNB.
At the meeting the other night, there was, you gave another name, what, what, what changed? Can you say it was National Education?
Yes, National Education Foundation. As we move forward in the process, we could not come to a resolution if there was going to be a cash or an INCAM. National Education Foundation, as we continued to research various entities, they were able to give us the INCAM, but then also, they were able to give us services which were in alignment with our division goals. As we look at moving forward with K-12 STEM academies, other offerings, course offerings for our students, talking about having industry certifications for our students, and also some other online courses that help our kids prepare for the global workforce. This, it just made more sense, yes, sir. And plus, they do the training, the professional development, the curriculum, everything, so, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And it was keen observation.
Yes, sir.
Keen observation. Is there any other question or comment? I would like to take about two minutes, just to, and it's not even going to be that long, but I attended a call meeting of the Education Advisory Council at WHRO on Tuesday. Mrs. Ann Dalton, the Virginia Secretary of Education, was a featured guest. She participated in a forum that allowed the audience to dialogue with her. She talked about educational practices as we move through the twenty-first century. She said that all of us must work on the eradication of the achievement gap. She did not say reduce it, as we've been saying, but she said eradicate it. She said that our scores are getting better on the SOLs, NATE, ACT, and SAT assessments, but not everyone is achieving. She still say, well, she said that we still have a thirty percent gap in achievement. She sees enhanced technology as a major part of the solution through individualized instruction and blended learning. She said that there are big equity gaps in student technology access, and we all know that. The superintendents of Alawak County and Hampton City talked about their successes in technology implementation. Hampton Schools purchased seven thousand laptops for all of their middle schoolers this year. I mentioned, believing in Franklin City School Division, the fact that our city council approved our QZAP resolution on Monday evening, and I also expressed our appreciation for their support. This may have advanced the possibility of us getting the funds, you know, there are three school divisions, and it was no assurance that we would get these funds. But I did get excited because Mrs. Dalton advised me openly to ask our superintendent to talk with WHRO about bulk purchasing. So, I left that meeting somewhat excited because of that direction from her in that open meeting. And if we go with bulk purchasing with some of the large school divisions, as we might be able to, you know, we are owners of WHRO. There are nineteen school divisions that own the PBS station here, and we are one of those. So, it's a strong possibility that we can maybe gain the support from the large school divisions and make a purchase for some of the things that we wish to purchase at a much cheaper rate that might allow us an opportunity to get many things, Mr. Bell, that are not really being considered at this moment. So, it's a good thing.
So, is that included that they can get the technology tables for the laptops?
Oh, that's a good question. That's a part of implementation, I would think. And, in looking at our buildings, we have to think the twenty-first century configuration. If we are purchasing laptops, then I'm thinking that when we look at implementation, we might be very much aware of the fact that we might have to start somewhere with tables for our laptops and for other computers that we might use. And I did attend something at Franklin High School where there was a, a use of laptops. And I sat there thinking, my lord, is this safe? Because the laptops were on desks, regular seats, and they, you know, seats do slant. So, I'm hoping that before we put all of this technology in our buildings, that we might consider that, Mrs. Austin, we do need tables. We do need tables. How do the principals feel about that? I don't know. Do we need tables if we're going to purchase the laptops? Mr. Felster, you want to speak to that? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know that you are, you're the one.
Well, I know Mr. Bell and I have talked about doing things with desks and tables at Franklin High School anyway, because it's a need of ours. It's been a long time since we've replaced and added to our inventory of desks and tables. So, I don't know if Mr. Bell wants to add to that or not, but we do have a need for desks and tables at Franklin High School. Not only for computers, but just overall.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much, Mr. Felster. And I asked him, Mr. Bell, because I've heard you talk about the way that you wish to go in the system, but I think that when building principals who are in the buildings support the things that we want to do, it makes the world a difference. So, not putting you last.
Okay, no ma'am, no ma'am. No ma'am, and you know, when we started the year at the convocation, we talked about teacher facilitation versus, versus teacher lecture. And you make a good point. Research I know for math shows that students do achieve better through the use of partnerships with, versus a table where they are collaborating. And tables do bring those soft skills together, as we are looking at merging the academics and the job skills, as we talk about college career citizenship, being citizen ready. So, if you are partnering and you're using teamwork and you're communicating with each other, it just makes sense to look at something like that where you can have tables in a building. I know that all the other principals would probably definitely love, if Travis is getting it, I know the other two love it too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I know that they will love to hear that. And then, as we look at the desk, we went with the initiative with the school nutrition, making sure that our kids were eating. So, that would be nothing that would be a hindrance to their learning. Another hindrance, as I've looked at the buildings, and I know the principals can attest to this, as we go up in age from fifth grade on up, the desks don't get any smaller. I mean, they don't get any larger. The desk is about the same. So, they need a little wiggle room so they can feel comfortable. So, it just, it makes sense. It makes sense.
And if we, if we do qualify, we get the QZAP bonds, then funds through QZAP program, then Mrs. Austin's question might be most valid than it is. And we, if we do the bulk purchasing, we might have money left.
Yes ma'am.
To do quite a number of things. So, that's terrific, wonderful. Any, anyone else with comments, observations? So, we need a motion to approve the QZAP resolution with the updated language.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, go right ahead.
You should, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I would like to approve the QZAP resolution with the updated language. And I'll second it.
It's properly moved and seconded that we approve the QZAP resolution with the updated language. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. A good day for our students.
Yes ma'am.
Business by school board members, important dates to remember. Yes. Right, next week, we go to the Virginia School Board Association Conference, and we're looking forward to, did you get an invite to go or?
Yes ma'am.
Wonderful. Are you joining us?
Yes ma'am.
How nice. Oh, terrific. Yes, great. So, would you like at this time to make any comments about anything, Mr. Ballard? Anything you've heard? Do you have any questions or any concerns of students across the division?
Might be to talk a few things on Franklin High School.
All right.
On November tenth, two thousand fourteen, the Franklin High School Junior ROTC Program was a veteran day ceremony where students learned true meaning of patriotism and it was used to say Franklin native Colonel Frederick Acoff was the guest. The Student Governance Association, which I'm the vice president of, has several fundraised and community service projects in progress. For example, in December, we planned to hold a toy draft for Christmas, and toys will be equally, will equally be distributed by my children in the community and the children's hospital in Kingsville. Tomorrow night, the Franklin High School Broncos will play a sermon, the first play out there, if possible, please allow support. The Spanish club is kicking off with some great student oriented ideas. At Franklin High School, teaching organizations are collecting non-cultural food items to to make to families and charities for Thanksgiving. DECA, which is a marketing, which is a marketing organization at Franklin High School, will be competing at district level at Chesapeake Square Mall on December third, two thousand fourteen. The Franklin Junior ROTC Program will participate in the Christmas Parade on December fifth, two thousand fourteen. The girls volleyball team participated in the regional tournament and made it to the semifinals. And the guys department sponsored a bowling athlete contest, Summer Winston was first place, won a fifty dollars, and Ash Marvile was second place, won a receiving twenty thousand dollars.
Very good. And we have two other schools, J.P. King and S.P. Morton, of course, you know that. And if ever you wish to go over and maybe talk to the principals from those two schools about something that you wish to report, or you could report, please do so. You are for the whole system, the liaison, and we thank you. Very good, excellent job.
I think actually more robotics, they win, I think wins last week.
Absolutely, they, they won first place.
They won first place in the design and then first place in the, Ms. Burgess will be mad at me, but I can't remember the others. But they did a wonderful job. Our kids were delighted, and we're very excited at S.P. Morton.
Congratulations.
And excuse me, Madam Chair, I would like to say something on behalf of J.P. King, which is near and dear to my heart. I would like to commend Ms. Lisa Francis and her staff and Ms. Mita Stratton. They had a program tonight. I wasn't able to be, be there with the Virginia. You would like to speak to them?
Sure.
Yes.
You know, I can't be outdone.
I know, I know, and that's why I told Mr. Ballard, I knew that it was coming.
Well, we had a visitor that talked to parents about reading, impacted reading across the curriculum. We also had the aquarium come for the children, and it was really, really nice, had different stations, and they rotated between minutes. I got to bop in because today, you know, I was in Richmond all day with Ms. David and our team. And so, we pulled in at six oh five, so I got there in time enough, you know, to hear a little bit, and then I heard some, you know, with the children, and then I came here. I also just want to say, as another good news is that J.P. King has been formally adopted by Paul D. Camp Community College, and so that's huge for us. So, more to come on that. That just has officially happened. And I spoke there twice last week, you know, to pull volunteers in. And so, we've had seven turn their forms in, just waiting for the fingerprints to be processed. And they'll be on the ground and running and volunteering, and they've talked about incentives. And if they couldn't volunteer to give money for, you know, incentives, pizza parties, our AR parties that we like to have, where kids meeting their goals. And so, so excited, you know, we are always excited about that. So, that's pretty official. So.
Speak, speak to your first win.
My what?
Your first win.
Oh, yes, you know, that is the best, last night, our girls, our little girls' basketball team, middle school team, won, we beat Southampton fifteen to four. Very exciting, the girls. We had a packed house. It was wonderful. The band played and, you know, we had a great time. And I just wish it was longer, you know, but now we're going to start with the boys. So, the boys will be a little bit longer, so they're getting pretty excited about that. Now, our intramurals are not going to stop. We're going to continue with our intramural program. But this was just kind of a team, and the girls had a blast, you know, now that they've won. So, and we beat Southampton. I mean, that's like major. So, but it's been exciting. Thanks.
If I could add one more minute to Franklin High School, the athletic dosters are going to be selling barbecue plates on December fifth, if you are interested in purchasing a barbecue plate, all that money goes back to the athletic. Then, uh, we go to the parade, they buy it for a parade, or you can.
That's good, yeah.
I think there's still a minute left, so many of the schools want to put it out this week. Are you getting some sheets?
I will deliver.
Good. I want to call, ask the board's approval, and if we want to do a vote, we may, but it might not be necessary. With Mr. Ballard being a senior and our meetings run, tonight we are doing fairly, what I suppose, a little late sometime, may we reorder our agenda and put him under the principal's monthly report, Mr. Bell? And then, and if he wishes to leave, I'm not encouraging you to leave, but all means stay as long as you'd like, but I do know that you probably have homework and lots of other things. If you wish to leave after that, then we would certainly understand. All right, thank you. Right, is there any other business? Well, we have the dates. We talked about the annual convention. Excited because Mr. Ballard is going to be there. And we also have on November the nineteenth, the Virginia Board of Education Accountability Meeting. Would you like to talk about that or say anything about that, Mr. Bell?
Seems like I've been talking about this since July one.
Yes, you have.
Hope, I'm hoping that this would come to an end on the nineteenth, when I present in front of the Accountability Committee. Mrs. David and myself have been doing some extensive work preparing for the committee meeting. The Advisory Council has done some outstanding work with the amending the corrective action plan. And I believe it's a document that the entire city of Franklin can be proud of. And I am humbled by the opportunity to represent the entire city to go over this with the Accountability Committee, to discuss, number one, how the council was formed and how the stakeholders came together as one, to make sure that we had an amended corrective action plan. Number two, talk about the steps and the processes involved. And then, number three, about our public hearing where we afforded it and brought it back to the community where they had the opportunity for input. And as we move forward with the Advisory Council, of course, you know, we have invited other persons from the community to please, you know, they can continue to take part as we continue to meet on producing a division strategic plan. Also, we're going to produce a facilities plan, technology plan, and communications plan. And you see, tonight, we were already in the process of the professional development plan as well as the local gifted plan, and we have a STEAM plan coming as well. So, this team is tired of me, you know, working there. But, but they have done absolutely a good job as we are working for the kids. It's not about working for us, it's for the kids. So, we want them to have the best education possible.
So, is it possible for the Advisory Council members to join us in Richmond on the nineteenth? Or have they been informed of this? It would be a wonderful time to have stakeholders there because I've noticed as we go to meetings with the Virginia Board of Education that we do have other school divisions. Are they aware?
Yes ma'am, they are aware, and they have been invited. So, you know, it's up to them to attend. I know that the board is planning to attend, but they have been invited.
True.
It was shared with everyone on last night as well.
Good.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, switching gears just a little bit, I think someone mentioned parade. Does the school board have a float? I'm just asking. Thank you.
We have, we have never.
I will say, there's still time to get a float in. City council's going to have a float.
And we have never, as a school board, had one, which is a good question, but I, we applauded the fact. We applauded the fact that our intramural team beat Southampton last night. And the Southampton School Board does have a float. Yes, yet in our, in the Christmas parade. So, Dr. Hall Leonard, that's not a bad question.
No, I see.
Yes, yes. So, if you.
You should ask the Southampton School Board to compete in Mrs. Burgess's cardboard vote about it. We, we put a cardboard vote in the, and that would be fine.
But, I mean, if you want to do some coaching in between now and maybe next week, it's not a bad idea. I have a question. We are at the point of business by school board members, and I have one last question. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I apologize for that, but you understood where I was. And I want to thank Mr. Counsel for presiding over that meeting. It seemed as though you all had a wonderful meeting. Some major decisions were made. And it was one item that you discussed, pictures of students and publications. I think you wanted pictures of our students on the, in the corrective action plan. Yes, and that was a wonderful idea. My question is, do we have on file in our schools the permission from parents to put pictures of their children in publications? Do we? Wonderful. And I want to ask that because I knew that that was, you know, law. So, that's good, wonderful. So, then, it's all right. If we can document, then we can do that. And Mrs. David is here. Did you wish to say anything this evening or make any statements? Our chief academic officer provided for us by the Virginia Department of Education.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor the meeting, but as I said last week, it's great to be back in Franklin. But I just want to commend the principals and Dr. Smith and Mr. Edwards. They did spend the full day today in training, what we call the ARP training, Aligning Academic Review with Performance Evaluation. And this training is not a sit and get. There's a lot of hard work. There's a lot of hard work, and I think our work as a team was very well validated. I think Mr. Felst presented for us, got a large round of applause from the whole group, but the importance of that work is really drilling down to when you have a performance indicator that says the teacher engages all students, what is evidence of that? What should we see if that's really happening? That's just a sample. And so, we get a clear picture in our mind, and then we've done some inter-rater reliability walkthrough evaluations, and today we sat and said, I saw this, what did you see? Did you see this evidence? And it was amazing to see how consistent we were when we had a consistent set of what we call look fours to go to. So, it was hard work, they stuck with it, and I think it was a very productive day. But speaking to technology, one of the indicators that is a part of performance evaluation is the teacher uses technology to enhance learning, and so, we're developing a list of look fours. And as a group, to answer your question, Mrs. King, we decided that one of the things where we all agreed we need to focus on next time to have more consistent observation is that technology piece. So, they're on it.
Thank you.
Okay? And I guess I will see you all on the nineteenth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right? Is there anything else, board members?
Can I do anything about this proposed project calendar?
That does not require you any adoption, and I'm so glad to see it because we follow the calendar as close as we possibly can, but sometimes we do have to change, so we don't usually adopt, we just use it. Questions, any other comments? Hearing none, a motion for adjournment is in.
I'd like to see, make a motion to go back in closed session.
That is correct. Okay, Mr. Fel.
I make a motion to go back in closed session to, I guess, just discuss personnel.
Personnel update.
Personnel updates.
Question, two, continue the discussion of personnel updates. All right? Is there a second that we return to closed session to discuss personnel updates? All right, thank you. Has properly moved in second that we return to closed session to discuss personnel updates? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you.
I call y'all.
Yes, thank you.